Good, I guess, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectment's meeting for Tuesday, August 4th, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
If you would indulge me, I'd like to have a moment of silence for our board to reflect on their duties as servants of the community and also to pray for the safe return and of their soldiers both overseas and in the United States. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law's after-notice that this meeting is being recorded by Easton Medical Cable Access Television and also by the Selectment's Office, then I have to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting. Seeing none, we can proceed. First item on our list is the public forum, and we have one person signed up, and it's Jim Jendryzak. Hi, Jim, how are you?
Hi, Paul, I'm well.
That's good. And as you know, we give you a chance to speak, and then we take it under advisement, and then we go from there.
Okay.
All right.
At the April meeting, I was supposed to speak, but there was a miscommunication between Lorraine and myself. It was my fault. So, I didn't say anything, which is fine, but I left each of you a copy of what I was going to say. I hope you had a chance to read it. This will be my last appearance before this board at this venue regarding this matter. Has any progress been made, anywhere?
As far as...
Either your own service or RFP RFQ.
Not yet, no. And I know you had, this is Mr., we're not going to have a conversation type of thing, but I know you had offered your services at one point, and hopefully we can still take you up on that if need be, as far as answering questions, because you were in the business, so...
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, because we should look at it soon, because our contract is up in '16, so...
So, if I may, getting your own service online at this point, in my opinion, is impossible because of Boston. You've got to pay for permits, registration...
Right.
Blah, blah, blah. You can't do that in a year, unless your current provider was to declare that, for whatever reason, they're leaving in two weeks or six months, then they could push it through. But otherwise, it's not gonna happen.
You're talking about doing it ourselves?
Right.
Yeah. There's also that small matter of money, so, as far as the, you know...
Money is...
The initial outlay and things, so...
Right. Money is the situation, and I understand it's part of the budget. I mean, I do. But to have a service that's servicing this town for eighteen years, they inherited the contract from my company, and in all that time, they can't put a location with a two-bay garage and a day room so that the crews can get out of the heat or get out of the cold? No. I've never believed in mobile posting, and I never will. What it does for this town is very simple. It makes the stats look good. That's it. Ask any one of their paramedics what it's like to do mobile posting in January at the library when it's ten degrees outside. I've told you about AMR overcharging. I gave you copies of my bills. Well, they took it a step further. I called them about my bills. I told them I was a disabled veteran living on Social Security. I said, "By the way, your company bought my company twenty years ago." Okay, fine. Then I get a collection notice. I am in collection from AMR for sixty dollars. This is how they treat the residents of your town. I'm at the point where I just don't know what to say. You've got to do something. If you rubber stamp this contract, they're going to continue doing mobile posting, and they're going to continue overcharging, in my opinion. They say they can respond from their Cottage Street location to the town line in seven minutes. Sure, if it's two o'clock in the morning on a Sunday. I know what they're doing. I know how they do it. You've got to make a decision. You're either going to rubber stamp this thing and forget it, or you're going to put out an RFP RFQ. If you do, I strongly recommend that that RFP RFQ be issued no later than November 1st, with the contract being awarded no later than January 2nd. That will give the winner, if you will, time to set up, maybe put a location out here, and make the commitment to this town that this town deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said, if we have any questions, since you were in the business as we go along, if it's okay...
Please.
Okay. Thank you.
Lorraine has my number.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jim. We have a handshake-proof table now. All right, we have a few moments before our next... Are you waiting for more people?
One minute.
Okay, that's fine. While we're waiting, we'll jump into old business here. One thing we want to do, because unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, we had to postpone our meeting with Greg regarding the interim town administrator and the duties and responsibilities, so I believe we have all the usual suspects in here right now, so if we can hopefully come together with a date that we can meet, hopefully within the next week at the latest...
Yeah. I'll meet with him anytime.
Okay. Angela, if you want to look. And Jim, you know, because we want, remember, we want to meet with Greg and define the job titles and job duties and whatnot, what we were supposed to do a couple of weeks ago, but that didn't work out, so... So, I don't know what...
Is this Friday tomorrow?
If we, I'm trying to think, yeah, I don't have anything going on. If we can do it in the morning, yeah.
Are you available Friday, Jim?
This Friday?
No.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, how about, can we do it maybe Monday?
Monday to 10?
Yeah.
How about available?
You're available?
Yep.
You available? Angela?
Yes.
Okay, what's a good time for everyone?
Anytime. Six in the morning?
Six o'clock.
I beat you to it for a change. Do I do it in the morning?
It would have to be in the morning.
Okay. How about 10?
Okay.
All right, so we'll do 10:00 AM. Okay, so 8:10 at 10:00 AM, and we'll just, we'll meet in, we can actually meet, we have to post this, right?
Yes.
So, we can actually meet in the regular meeting, or might assume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll do that. All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the Easton Medical Police Department Emergency Medical Dispatch Policy and Procedures. Actually, I think you've had a chance to look over.
I reviewed that with the chief. He made some minor changes. I believe the board has revised policy.
Okay.
I don't see it. Who are you?
Okay, is that something...
I don't see it.
All right. And what we can do is, if you want, if you want to get a chance, I know, to review it, we can vote on it next meeting?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. All right.
That's it?
Actually, I can reprint it off my...
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
That's that 9/11 we got last night?
Yeah, but I guess there's been some changes.
That's the...
Dispatch, emergency...
Emergency Medical Dispatch. It should be in there.
What were the changes, if I may ask? Counsel, what were the changes? Do you remember?
Specifically, there were a couple of language changes in clarifying who or how the review agent officer was going to be appointed, especially with the chief. And the chief clarified that the compensation for that officer would be paid for a two grand.
Okay.
As a reimbursement, you have to spend it first, but then you're reimbursed for the money, so it's probably two grand.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I believe, well, a few minutes early, is everyone, okay, we have everyone here, then our next appointment is the Library Trustees regarding a vacancy on the Board of Library Trustees Board. Why don't you folks come up? Well, we'll have to, I was going to stand up, but we'll have to wave.
Do the proverbial...
Yes.
(inaudible)
Hi.
How was everyone?
Good.
Okay, you are here today. You have a vacancy on your board, and you have a person to fill it, and you've all agreed, I believe. You voted to recommend this person, so you're basically just, I don't know if anyone wants to say anything. I figured you should put the microphone in front of you if anyone's...
I can speak on behalf of our candidate that we recommended. Some people in the room might know Cindy McNodd, who's been a long, long time resident of Easton Meadow. Has over forty years' experience in working with libraries, specifically in service to children in the community, and that includes almost fifteen years as our recently retired children's librarian in Easton Meadow. Anybody who's watching this tape who had any children going through school or participated in any programs that the library offered certainly knows the name of Cindy McNodd. Cindy has generously given her consent to serve as library trustee, until which time, you know, the vacancy arises again, needing, you know, to be filled via an election or whenever.
Okay.
So, when the board was made aware of her interest, she instantly rose to the top of, albeit a short list of candidates, so the board unanimously recommended her to fill this vacancy.
All right. Any questions from the board?
Does anybody else want to say anything? I think she said it well.
On behalf of, thank you, I would echo those words also. On behalf of Art McGuire, the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, I'm Charlie Gray, the Vice Chair, and as Susan said, it was unanimous recommendation by the Board of Library Trustees. Cindy McNodd has been a longtime librarian with our town and a very good one. She has touched many, many young lives, and she will be a wonderful trustee. And speaking of Art McGuire, here he is.
Here he is.
Retiring. lives in my neighborhood. At one point, as I was bringing my grandchild to the library early on, we were talking about how he became a librarian, and I said how important it is for a librarian with young children particularly, and I told her the story about a librarian from the Forest Park branch of the Springfield City Library, Ms. Bray, who affected me when I was a type. And she, Cindy, said, "Ms. Bray, well, I worked for her at the Forest Park branch." And so, I think back now, sixty-five, seventy years later, that which I had enjoyed, the closeness of the library staff to the young people and the closeness of the library staff to me, and the importance that the library functions are held by Cindy McNodd are exactly the same as were passed on to me by her mentor. So, I would absolutely endorse Cindy's nomination and recommend passage.
Since we started a couple of minutes earlier, and I apologize for that, I don't know if there's anything you want to add regarding the candidate.
Strongly in support of her, all of us.
Okay. All right. Any other words from the board? Okay, I'd like to propose a motion to approve Cynthia McNodd as the member of the Board of Library Trustees.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I think she's a wonderful candidate.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Our next appointment, we are a few minutes early, but you are a solo act, so do you mind coming up now?
I am.
Hi, Don.
Hello. Hi, Don.
You are the Chairperson of the Easton Medical Charter Commission?
I am.
How are you today, Don?
I'm well.
That's good. And you're here for one basic topic, but there's two little items here, and one of yours and one of Tom's response, so...
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, I am here to ask for your permission to have Marge LaRocca, who works in the town collector, treasurer, clerk's office, to serve as clerical assistance for our charter commission. She stepped up immediately while we were searching for someone. We went through the town departments. No one stepped forward. We thought we had a volunteer in line. That panned out, did not work out, so Marge reconsidered and said, yes, she would like to do it. She has been doing it. She is invaluable to us. She really steps up. She also knows, you know, contacts and whatnot. And so, we would love to have her. I've spoken to the Chair of Appropriations, because she also does appropriations. He had no problem with that. And she can handle the workload without a problem. And so, I sent a letter, vote to you, as I need permission from you, and to Tom Florence as well.
And I know, Tom, I know you're here, but I know you said that you will be able to spare her, because it's not a big election year?
Exactly. My response to Greg, yeah, this is, it's very, very efficient for what she does, and again, it's been a non-election year, and we will be able to afford her, and I know it's appreciated.
We do appreciate it. And if there is any, you know, somewhere to come to me and say, "Look, there's a problem," we'll deal with it immediately, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I got a question. That's extra duties for her, so is she going to be asking for a regrade?
No, this is voluntary.
Yeah, voluntary.
Still extra work.
It would be the union contract, you can ask for paid overtime or ask contact. And doing contact, rejected hours, it comes out to me one day per month for all of this thing itself, and that's something that you're definitely, so we did look at that way, unless you choose worker choice instead of paid overtime is contact.
Okay. Is there any question?
You're the main person there?
I am.
How come you're not doing this duty?
I could not run a meeting, take notes, type notes, do all of the, I probably, as it is right now, I'm probably putting in ten, fifteen hours a week, extra on top of it. You cannot run a meeting and take good quality notes, which is her main job, is to attend a meeting and take notes. And we also decided we do have a secretary position. However, nine of us were elected, and in fairness to the voters, we felt that our commissioners should do their due diligence in doing research and participating in the meeting. If they're busy taking notes, they will not be participating in the meeting. We do have budgetary, we have, the town was by state statutes, it's gave us five thousand dollars, which we can use towards clerical expenses, so that's what we would like to do.
Okay, so we're not going to have to pay for it if the comp day, you would actually pay for that? Or how is that going to work?
The comp would work out of, would be tracked, I sign off on the hours. It does come out of charter commission.
Because of charter, okay.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
That was my question, is like, don't you have funds for that?
Yeah.
Okay. If Marge can handle it, if anybody can, I know she can, so, okay, Chair, we have a question from the back.
Yes.
Erica.
I'm sorry, I believe the statute says that the town has to provide clerical for the charter commission, that the five thousand's for other expenses, but I believe it says that the town has to chair the provided.
I know.
I could be wrong, but, you know, we could always clarify that before we have the charge go through, just so then...
I wish I could. In my reading of it, and Jim may be a little better than I, was that the town is responsible for providing office space for us, if we so desire it. Provide a meeting place so that we can meet and provide access to town employees during working hours, so that we can do some interviews, correct? Other than that, the five thousand was for towards clerical, what I think we...
Nineteen.
Yes, we purchased paper.
And that's how I remember it too, when I was on the charter commission, too.
Question, just to clarify for the record, the secretary's going to work and receive comp time. That comp time is why it gives her regular work week as the collective treasurer. Correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Florence is representing the board that he could give up this employee with those hours of comp time in his schedule.
And then the charter commission will actually pay her for that, those hours.
Through, through the, through, yes, through the comp. And the workload, we anticipate to lighten as of December and as of April 12th next year, which is our anticipated date for the ballot, it will no longer, the position will no longer be available, won't exist.
All right. Any further questions?
Well, I talked to Marge today, and she said, I asked if she volunteered, not pressured into it. She said she volunteered.
Yes.
But she said she also would like, you know, if someone came along, that she would give it up to him.
Yes, and we have been looking. No, amazing. We have not been successful.
All right. If there's no further comments, I'd like to propose a motion to approve Marge LaRocca as the, would it be Recording Secretary? Is that the title, or is it just secretary to the charter commission?
Clerical support.
Clerical support to the charter commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, girls, sit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are a few minutes early, but Sarah's here. Do you want, we can do something else? Tom, could you get Don?
You forgot your purse, Don.
And this is on camera.
(inaudible) checkout.
Exactly.
Not for, at least it would have been fun for Sid.
Sorry.
That's all right. How were you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. All right, we're here for a couple of items, and Jim, I don't know if you want to, you don't have to come, well, you can come up if you want, just...
(inaudible).
Okay. All right, we're here for like five or six items. The first one being, there's, and you've got something to do with the non-union benefits policy.
Yes. So, what that is, is it took the initiative to type up a policy. Currently, the town does not have any policy like that in place. So, what, who it applies to are people who are not part of a collective bargaining unit and people who are not a contracted employee. So, contracted employee, for instance, are primarily the department heads, but there are a couple of other individuals that do have a contract. But there are a few individuals who do not fall in either of those categories. For instance, at the Council on Aging, there's a couple of the kitchen staff support there. There might be a couple of people in the rec. department. There's very few departments that actually have people. However, when things like a holiday comes up, for instance, right now, there's no policy in place as to how to deal with that. So, to try to make consistency and make it very clear for when someone is taking on these kinds of responsibilities, that I thought that a policy would be the best way to do it. So, the policy says that it applies only to the departments that fall underneath the Board of Selectment, because this is the draft policy that I wanted to present to you. If it is something that might be relevant to the other boards, we could always discuss it with them. I'm not really sure just how many people it might affect under them, and of course, they would want to have their feedback. So, the ones that I thought of that it did impact were all Board of Selectment departments, and it's people who have over the nineteen hours. And that would then, they know what they qualify for compared to others.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I talked with Sarah about this earlier during the day, and I got a call right before I came down here. And I'm not one for table and stuff. Matter of fact, I hate the table stuff, but I like the tableists, because I've got some concerns I'd like to talk to you about before we pass this.
Well, so what we may want to do is have Jim take a look at it, if you haven't already.
Sarah did send it to me.
Okay.
She was very anxious to look at it, but my suggestion is the board is considering adopting such a policy that it not be adopted individually for your people, people in your control, but that there be either an agreement from all of the department, the board, statesman applied, or present to the county for IR, or this could be the status of that. Otherwise, I'm afraid you're going to get destroyed in the situation where someone works for the assessors department, the visiting, you know, the director of our meeting for the board, they would have, arguing, not the same, that this is the person who works in the company, or is next to it. The next creates some inconsistencies that I think in the long term create problems with the even operation. So, I would suggest if you're going to do this, that if you don't, townwide, it's, town side, it's, the schools have their own talent system, consider that.
Okay.
Concerning right now, the handful of individuals, they are being treated at the discretion of the department that they're reporting to. So, currently, there is not consistency as to what's going on, just so you are aware of the current situation.
Okay.
Through this year, I had spoken with our very capable Sarah Menard.
Can you talk up to him, please?
Sure. I had spoken with our capable Sarah Menard, and what, the only thing that I cautioned about was there are some grants that are out there that don't pay for holidays, and I think we should have some language within this document that says if it comes, if a grant comes through and it says you're not paid for your holidays, that you don't get paid for it. Because otherwise, if we put this through and saying we have to pay for it, then we would, as a town, have to absorb that payment for those holidays. So, it probably would be few and far between, but just, it's better to have that language in there than not to. And Sarah said she could go ahead and put that in.
Yeah, the only, through the chair, the only thing I got here is it says continuous service for one year. The definition is defined as working nineteen hours or more per hours a week. I thought if we, I thought that should be twenty hours or more, because if someone works nineteen hours, they can't get benefits, right?
No. Well, the collective bargaining unit for the town employee union says that if an employee works twenty or more hours, they are benefit-eligible. Since the individuals that this applies to are not part of a collective bargaining unit, that does not apply. I believe Mass Law, which the Affordable Care Act, is the thirty hours determining for health insurance, so I believe the thirty hours is what would apply. Jim, is that your, twenty?
Please, twenty hours or more.
It is, it is twenty, Jim? It is twenty?
Okay.
Because...
Okay.
All right. So, we will take this under advisement. I know Selecting Gorman wants to, has a couple of questions. You're going to get back to Sarah on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah?
Yep.
I'm sorry to do that to you, but I just, I just got called before I come here, and I hate tables, nothing.
That's all right. I'd rather it be right the first time.
But this is a first read anyway, so with any first read, you do have a second.
Considering this, the work place, the benefits, it says that work in the collective bargaining is... But that's fine, it's the person, as you imply the party, you imply the members of different departments, different entities, who may be subject, dear people, able to be in a different form, sort of alternative to just represent collective bargaining facility in the town.
What does say, it does say with the town... What does say, it does say with the town employees' union, so that's.
But way to spell out the language, just what you're giving to these people rather than reference the agreement, because if the agreement changes, and these benefits will automatically change, and if the reference is the agreements, the reference is the benefits in the policy, then if you agree for something, this policy is valid. So, it's a, it's a matter of what the board wants to do.
The, the intent when I wrote that, and I, as I said, it was for the board to select men departments, which all of them have the TEU, which is why I referenced the TEU in there. The intent was to create equality within a department. So, if everybody else in that department gets that holiday, I would hate for then the one or two other people to not have, you know, so it was to try to create equality within each department. That's all.
All right. All right, so we will take that under advisement until Selective Gorman gets back to the other new.
Sure.
All right. Now, next item is cultural, historical utilities?
Yes. So, in the past, the cultural and historical building, which is the Little Red Schoolhouse in the museum, that the utilities for them, the electric and the, one has gas and one has oil, have been budgeted in its individual department. All other municipal buildings, their utilities are budgeted underneath the DPW in the utility department. This year, during the budget process, a question was raised a few times as to why or can DPW take over doing the utilities for those two, why, why are they separate? I have met with Bob Parent, and he said that he has no problem taking on those utilities for those two buildings, as long as the related budget that was approved for fiscal sixteen moves also to the utility budget of DPW, which I think makes logical sense, that he just didn't know if there was any history of some kind as to why that it would be separate. In the research that I've done, I had not been able to find anything as to why it would stay separate. I'm recommending that we have DPW do that, since they do do all the other utilities, and I think it makes sense to, to keep them all together, so I'm asking for your approval tonight.
Do you have any issue with that? Okay, anyone from the board?
Yeah, Sarah, when would that start, as of next month, or?
I could do it immediately.
Immediately?
I could talk to Bob and see, see when he'd, you know, he'd have to call the utility companies to get the bill to sent to his address, rather than to the other locations that, pretty much as soon as we're able to.
So, the budget that those places put in for would be just swapped over to them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it would just be those, the gas, electric, and oil line would just be moved from there into the utilities department, which I think is four twenty-nine, in the same lines.
My question would be, have, I understand you've spoken with the historical commission?
Yes, and they are all for.
And have you spoken with the cultural?
The cultural, I have not been able to get in touch with yet, but I will get in touch and confirm that they do not have an issue. I do not see them having an issue, but.
I don't see why they would.
But just to be sure, I'd hate to step on toes that way. But certainly, I don't have a problem with it being moved over, but I certainly would want them, if they want to handle their own budget, they should have, you know, the authority to do it. So, but you've heard from historic, so.
Yep.
And, you know, send it through, and then pending, hearing from cultural, if they're agreeing, and we'll go through.
We can, we can vote on it, subject to.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that way then when I get her on the phone, it then.
Yep.
I'd like to propose a motion to allow the cultural and historical utility items on their budgets to be transferred over to the DPW budget corresponding, I guess, corresponding line items, for lack of a better term, subject to the approval of the cultural commission. So, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All right. Next item is the building department inspector raises.
Okay. So, my understanding is that last meeting that this came up, whether there were raises included in the budget or not. And so, I wanted to clarify that budget, that the budget that was presented in the town warrant that the town voted on did not include raises, that those raises were in the supplemental, the supplemental had not been approved by the Board of Selectmen. It had started to have a vote on the May twelfth meeting, the vote was stopped as questions were asked, and asked of the building department to bring additional information. My understanding is that it had not been received prior to the town meeting, so the Board of Selectmen had not approved the supplemental budget. The building department had gone to the appropriations meeting on March twenty-fourth, had presented their budget then. The appropriations committee had asked for additional information concerning those increases which were on the supplemental. At the time of the town meeting, those items had not been received, so appropriations had only approved the base budget, not including any raises. So, I just wanted to clarify that information.
Okay, so in order to, if that being the case, because I think we're all under the impression that the budget was.
Right.
Had included it, so that being the case, we would have to go to the meeting in September, October, whatever.
Correct.
And get the change, because I don't think this is a huge dollar amount, when all said and done.
I, I don't believe so, but if those raises are approved, then yes, it would have to go to the special town meeting to be appropriated.
Okay.
And also, does it need to go to appropriations first as well? That, because they have to give a recommendation on, at the town meeting, right?
Well, they're, I mean, they're recommending for it, they, I mean.
Right. No, no, we don't have to, I, I get that.
And I know they, I'm not sure, they weren't opposed to that, were they, they weren't?
They want, they wanted.
They wanted additional information.
Well, I was actually, I was going to ask Dan.
This was submitted to the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
I pulled this out of my, like, file.
Right, but that's, I guess what I'm saying is, when you talk to the appropriations about your supplemental budget, I mean, did they have any opinion on the?
They said go back and see.
Okay, but they didn't have any opinion on whether they were entitled, or whether they were approved of the increases? Okay, then what so we'll do is, we'll check with appropriations to get Don like.
Because like I said, this was submitted.
Yeah, and then if that's the case, the next time we'll, we'll.
Do you have the date? When you did?
The date.
We can't do anything until the town meeting, special town meeting.
Exactly.
So, what we'll do is, we'll check with appropriations, get their blessing, for lack of a better word, and then come back at our next meeting, and if it's, if they're under agreement, in agreement, then we'll take necessary votes, and then just get it ready for the special town meeting. And that could be retroactive to, with that, with it being added to the budget to July first?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to take a vote to bring it to the town?
Uh, we will when we get around to that, we don't have to do that tonight. Okay, next, requisitions.
Uh, the, the next three items, I had asked if those could be in executive session.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
Please.
Yep, no problem.
Also, the next three are?
Right.
Please, please.
Okay. So then, then we are all set till executive, which hopefully won't be too far from that. You guys can either sit there and enjoy the close-up view, or you can go back to the seats, whatever you want, and so. Under new business, on the planning board, we have a, we have the resignation of planning board member Alessandro Macchia, effective September first, two thousand fifteen, so I approve, I assume that the process will be that the planning board will come up with a candidate or whoever, and they will join with us, and I believe it's a joint vote of both boards for the, for the approval of whoever they bring forth to us. Next item is a request from a resident for no dumping sign on Albano Drive, the police department, I believe recommended this.
Yeah, they did.
I guess there's been, there's been dumping on the end of a street, unfortunately. So, I would like to propose a motion to, to approve the no dumping sign on Albano Drive.
Some.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Now, we have a request for a block party Saturday, August fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, from two P M. to ten P M. on Patterson Avenue, Robin Street to Birch Avenue. The recommendations were received from police fire and DPW. I would like to propose a motion to approve the block party for Patterson Avenue.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a proposed date of Thursday, September tenth, for a regional Board of Selectmen's meeting. I believe normally we only hold these when Haley's comet comes by, but we're supposed to be having it quarterly. But in any event, I don't know if that's, if that's meets with the approval of the board, I'm going to have to check, because if for some reason that date sounds familiar, but.
That's a woman.
Yeah, I believe it's going to be Wolverhampton. So, if that's, if that's meets with the approval, we can get back to them and tell them that, that will be fine, so if that's, okay.
That's good.
All right. We have a request from Maureen Brazil of J C's regarding waiving the ten percent administrative fee for the fire department fireworks detail, and just to let, as a member of the Rotary Club, I had a, I had a, what's the word I'm looking for? An animated discussion with members of the J C's at our, on July third, so I feel I'm going to recuse myself, because I don't know if I could actually give a unbiased, unbiased vote on this, so I will recuse myself for this vote.
Okay, all right.
I, I'd just like to say I'm against waiving the fee, because we're waiving too much for them. These, they have to pay those firemen, and they take that money that, that are paid to those firemen, and the money they get, they put back in, like, for overtime and stuff for them, so by, by us passing that, we're going to be hurting them as far as their own budget for overtime. I talked to Paul Morsette today about that. He said that money is always put back into whoever pulls duty that day. And he says we always have more firemen there anyway, so they're getting more of a pain for the buck than they really, because if they had to pay everybody, you know, so I'm against waiving it myself.
Okay, well, I guess we're on the opposite side of the fence, because this is an administrative fee, and what we've done, it seems like it's something that we, we have waived them in the past for nonprofits, and they are a nonprofit. So, it's not something that we haven't done in the past, so therefore, I would be in favor of it. However, you bring up a point about Chief Morsette saying that it goes back into payment for their budget, but I don't, it's such a small fee of hundred and four, but I understand it could be the hundred and four dollars, I understand that it could be the principal of it. I'd like to talk to Chief Morsette, because I didn't get that understanding from him when I spoke with him, so I may not be getting.
From who, Paul?
Yeah, from Chief Morsette.
I just spoke to him probably at two o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I don't know. With the information that I have right now, seeing that we've waived them in the past, and we did waive the, the police administration fee, and the thing about it is, this was all in reference to the Fourth of July, and we were trying to help them out this one year. This is not something that we do all the time, it is a case by case, and seeing that we were trying to have a consorted effort to put forth the Fourth of July fireworks, and there was an understanding that the administration fees were being waived, however, we failed to take a vote on, with regards to the fire, we did do the police, but we didn't specifically say the fire, so that's why, since we had voted for it before.
I'm still against it.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote, and we'll, it'll be what it is. I'll entertain a motion to move with the waiver of the administration fees for the fire department. So, I've moved it, I guess I can second out a necessity. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it's, it has to be held in possibly, need to talk to Paul at that point, so call Paul, they can.
See, the reason is, it's helping out one another, you know?
That's what I'd like to talk to Chief Morsette about, because that's not, I may, I may have misunderstood what he was saying, but I didn't understand him to say that that amount of money would hurt his budget. We are at a stalemate, sir.
Okay.
So, I need to speak to Chief Morsette.
Okay.
And see where we are.
All right. Our next request, we have a request from, from John LaCory, recently retired police officer, as of last week, to be appointed as a special officer for the town of East Long Meadow, which basically allows him to work road details. I know we have one, I believe, one retiree who does that, and I guess he's requesting that, so I don't know if the board has any comments on that, or questions, or, all right.
Through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, any, are you familiar, attorney down here with this? Is this a bit to do?
We're.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, John LaCory, who just retired from the police department, wants to be appointed as a special officer, basically so he can do road, road work. I know we have one officer, I believe Officer Driscoll, who is in that position right now, so I don't, I guess, well, you can ask.
So, why do we need to have, if we already have one person doing it, why do we need another person to do it?
I think the issue is, this is not a request coming from the department.
Mm-hmm.
It's a request from the retiree to be allowed to continue to work outside details.
Right.
I spoke with the chief on this earlier in the week, and I was there for another matter. It indicates that, and I indicate to him that you could only use retired officers for outside details to do said, that the existing officers.
Turn them down, yeah.
Are available or refused, and if we didn't have enough departmental people to do it, then we would have to do it to retiree or to outside officers from the community who couldn't do this outside details.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not a request by the department saying they need it.
Right, it's a request by.
It's a request by the officer saying he would do it if it's necessary and he'd be willing to do it.
Okay, but it says special officers, it says a special officers list. Did I read that incorrectly? A list of special officers, so any retired person could go on that list of retired?
If they want to.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Police officer could ask to do it. Apparently, this list was established, but I don't.
So, we have one now?
Right, it just must be added to it.
A few years back, there were one officer, retired, wanted to be able to work outside details. And it's really the result of the change in retirement, which allows retirees to, you know, in addition to their retirement, as long as they don't receive what the salary is for the position that they retire.
Thank you.
Plus fifty thousand. So, I can't, I can't say to you exactly what the special, the provisions are. In this time of, as I said, we've approved, a few years back, lots of this will, after this retirement, this request to work as an officer to do outside details in the community from regular officers over there, and the designation that was given to him by the chief then was special police officer, and that's the same designation as being carried over to this request.
Okay, so let me ask this, so just because somebody retires does not make them eligible to be a special officer?
If we.
You'd, you'd, they'd have to come to us case by case to be.
Correct.
Placed on it, that's all I needed to know.
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
And I, I prefer to address that, I'm advised by the chief too, that these officers to do said that they are still performing these duties, to see any supplemental training that would be required of existing officers, because they still do retain the powers of the rest as a special police officer. So, they do still receive training procedures to carry the officers.
Through the chair, do we know how many officers we have on this that have the status?
As far as I know, we have one, or is it?
Two.
Right now?
This will be the second.
This will be the second.
Yeah.
Before we leave this, Don, my understanding is that these police officers are accept or every regular police officer.
Right.
If they refuse it, and there'd be four out of town officers, right? And they can work it till they're sixty-five years old, till they collect social security.
I, I believe, I actually do not know the exact answer to whether it's sixty-five years age for a current police officer applies to the special police. My belief is that it does, I haven't got any research to be able to answer that question. I believe sixty-five is the correct answer.
All right, any further questions? I'd like to propose a motion to approve John LaCory as a special officer for the town of East Long Meadow. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is. Aye. Uh, next item is notification from Emergency Management Director. I guess originally we were gonna go out for an MOU for a pet trailer, but we don't have to, based on, he's, he's re, um, he's reassessing what the needs are, based on a conversation with the Director of the Sprint Field Office of Emergency Preparedness. Um, so I guess we don't have to worry about that until he comes back to us with, uh, whatever form of, of, uh, information that, that we have to act on for him. Uh, next item is, there's Board of Health, there's one item.
Uh, the old business for the Board of Health, Greg is making out for the regular a full-time health inspector. We hope to have it going next week, because we're waiting for Greg to get here. Any, any progress on this?
So the job description, or no, no, Adam?
Yeah. Lorraine gave me, uh, two files, and, and everything is in there, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and I just gave, uh, the Selectmen, Billy, a, a copy of what the, uh, the ad would look like. Uh, I mean, I did have a discussion even quick tonight, as far as need for full-time versus part-time, and something that he feels pretty strongly about that we need. So...
Okay.
And for new business, we're, we're putting that in next week, right Greg, in paper?
If you have to approve the ad, or the, you have to approve the ad also?
Yeah.
It's just draft right now, but...
All right, so we look at the next meeting and approve it?
And the new business, uh, for the, uh, help, is, uh, we drafted a memo for approval from Lois Lunowitz, temporary health agent for, uh, converted or remodeled food establishment, that they would have to establish, uh, and get a hold of the Health Department, because what we're finding, when we go into these, these places, that they're reconstructing things, that some of the stuff they're doing, they're reconstructing for the health, or for food, that it doesn't meet the code. And rather have them do things twice, we're trying to set a policy down where they have to, uh, give us a plan, if it's going, only if it's gonna be a food establishment, and it gotta meet the Health Department's approval too, before they start. And we agreed that at one of our board meetings, a twenty-dollar fee for application fee for that. And, uh, that was section eight dash three oh three dot ten of the Food Code, states that the plan specifications and information should be accompanied by a properly completed application, available to Board of Health Office, with accompanying fee which has been set at twenty-five dollars. This application fee was adopted by the Board of Health on March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. And they'll have thirty days after submission to get our approval. Well, I think it's a good thing, because I've been with her on different instances where they're putting an addition on, and they're getting some of the wrong equipment in there.
Mm-hmm.
To update, so, exactly, we're trying to help the business out, instead of having buy something and they can't return it, you know, we're trying to help them out, to get established from day one, to get the right kind of equipment in there.
Okay, now, this is, uh, through the chair, this is a draft, so I don't know if you'd want Attorney Donahue to review it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll give you that on the chair.
All right. And then the only question I have, once again, through the chair, is, obviously, what we'd want, I, I hope we don't get into the situation where we're starting, we're building policy now, and then when we get our permanent person in, then they wanna change stuff, because they wanna do it their way. So once this is in, we'll, okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Yeah, I definitely agree with you.
All right.
If I might, as part of my review of this draft, this board is starting to meet with the planning director and the building commissioner to determine exactly how this is to be implemented, because this will result in a block, in some fashion, being placed on the issuance of a permit by the building commissioner until the compliance for the Board of Health. And we've had some issues with those that I'd like to address, hopefully before it goes into effect, so, um, it's probably a test, or something with the board.
Okay.
Definitely will.
This is a first read, too.
Yeah, yeah, so we're gonna have, okay. All right. Y'all set?
Yes.
All right. Um, before we get to Town Council, could you read the vast meetings invitations to remind you?
There's so many. Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, August eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, at six P.M. at the Town Hall Hearing Room.
Thank you. Uh, Town Council, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have sat down, you gotta get your exercise, you're short-term.
That's all I get today.
And since, this is, this is sort of like the, what is it, closing the barn door after the horse is out, but since we're about ready to go into executive session, I, I wanna ask if anyone else has been recording the meetings. All right, could you state your name?
Chris, could you run a little while?
All right, thanks, Chris. So Billy mentioned it to me a little while ago, but I just didn't get around to mentioning it. So now, as far as, um, Town Council, we've got three items from Sarah that, that are executive. We've got, I think everything here is executive, isn't it?
The two Town Council items, uh, were, were there, there are, well, two, actually, three, uh, deal with, uh, union...
And non-union negotiations.
Union contract interpretation and application requests by the union for review, which would be an executive, a little bit of determination. And the other two were non-union collective bargaining negotiations, respective contracts.
Okay, so I'd like to propose a motion to go into executive session.
Sound good.
I'm not done yet. To discuss items relating to, uh, union and non-union negotiations, um, what was that, contract, um, what did you say, the, um, that's the word I'm looking for, as far as the contracts, um...
Contract negotiations.
Yeah, okay.
Non-union contract negotiations.
All right.
And, uh, items for the, uh...
Items relating to...
Well, items, D, E, and F of the, uh, council, uh, items would be going to executive session for the purpose of discussing, uh, matters concerning client privilege with council.
Okay. To return to open session, I'll leave to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Selectman Thorburn?
Yes.
Selectman Gorman is, Selectman Peddery C.S. All right.